Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we call tonight's meeting to order, we're going to ask Mr. Neil Rowe from Waterhouse Church to come up and lead some indication. Thank you for being here this evening, sir. Welcome back.
First off, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your support Sunday at the prayer meeting.
Thank you. Not just my support, but the support of council and city staff and 30,000-plus citizens. We're all with you.
There you go. Thank you. Heavenly Father, we come to you today in this hour. God, we need you now more than ever. Lord, I pray for reconciliation among the people. God, I pray for the city council meeting, Lord, that you would be in it. God, I pray for wisdom and also pray for your peace to be upon us all. Lord, I pray for the police department, God, that you would guard their hearts and guide them, God. I thank you for all that you're doing in our city. I think of what you're doing in all the men and women. We love you for that. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you again, sir. Please come back soon. It is 6:31. At this time, I'd like to call to me to order, announce we have a quorum present. We are missing Jeff Robinson this evening. Item three on the agenda is pledges of allegiance to the United States and Texas flags. Mayor Pro Tem, do you mind?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and invisible.
Thank you for that. Item four on the agenda is items of community interest. Mr. Hotop, welcome back, sir. Anything tonight, share?
Well, just one thing Pastor Rowe alluded to, but it was just the community-wide prayer event that was hosted at the amphitheater at Heritage Park on Sunday night, and that happened at seven o'clock and was great attendance and really a great event that really represented Weatherford well that evening, so.
Thank you. Staff, well done on that and planning and preparation. Didn't have a lot of time to prepare for that, so thank you. Council, anything for items of community interest? Okay. Item five on the agenda is presentations and proclamations. Five A is accept anonymous donation to the Weatherford Public Library of the McFarland home painting titled "The Cattle Barons" by Ronald Thomason, the artist who also sculpted the Peter Pan statue located at the Weatherford Public Library. Good afternoon, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I'm Chris Ocardo, Director of Library Services, and I'm pleased to share with you this evening, this gift that we've received. This was, as you stated, from an anonymous donor, and it wasn't a local. This came from across the country, so it was shipped at some trouble to us, so we're glad to have it back here in Weatherford. Ronald Thomason was a Weatherford resident and artist. He was the 1974 Texas State Artist. He also sculpted the Peter Pan statue at the library. He painted this picture in 1968. It is one of at least three paintings that he did of the Charles McFarland home that used to be here in Weatherford. Another one of the paintings was entitled "The Mother McFarland's Porch." It's ag timber on board. The value is estimated in the low six figures, so this was a considerable gift to us. We'll treasure it. Tell you a little bit about the house here, if you'll indulge me. It was built as the home for the Charles McFarland family. It was him and his wife and seven children. And news reports varied. There were between 12 and 22 rooms, but it was three stories, a fairly considerable house on 23 acres of land. At the time, it was south of the city limits of Weatherford, but it was located approximately, well, where the College Park Shopping Center is now, approximately at College Park in South Main Street. And it was torn down in 1974, unfortunately, but we do have this memento here, which we'll proudly hang in the Weatherford Public Library, so we encourage you to come and see.
I'll turn around so the audience can see. It'd be great. Round of applause for that. That's awesome. We're doing great. Just stand there the rest of the meeting so everybody can sit. Don't set it down, right?
Thank you all.
Thanks for the presentation. What a wonderful gift and will be a great addition to the Weatherford Public Library. Item five B, something that we've all been waiting on, just anxiously and so excited, is a P O I highlight video featuring Chad Marbut from the Capitol Projects Department.
Mayor, Members of Council, Blake Rexroth, Director of Communications and Marketing, and the man of the hour is sitting in the gallery waving. I have to embarrass him a little bit. So this is another installment of one of our employee highlight videos, so this is number four or five, I believe, that we've brought to you all. This highlights Chad, and you all know Chad very well, so I'll show the video right now and hopefully you enjoy.
Do autographs immediately after, please?
He will have an autograph session. $10 a copy.
Chad Marbut, I'm in the Capitol Projects Department. I'm a civil engineer here. My job entails of anything Capitol Project-related, so new construction, whether that be stormwater utility or transportation-related, we handle everything from the master planning to the design, analysis, construction, and then the maintenance afterwards. Grew up in Alvarado, Texas, married my high school sweetheart from Alvarado. I've had two little girls, which are the center of our universe. Went in the Air Force, did five years active duty as a mechanic on F-15s. Working for the city has been one of the best things I've ever done. I actually got hired in kind of a pretty low level just to be able to get out here, and part of what makes it great is that it doesn't feel like work to me. It's a lifestyle. The people I work with are like family, and so I would just say that that makes all the difference, no matter what kind of work you're doing, the support that we can get. It kind of doesn't feel like a job. I did quite a few years in private sector doing big projects in DFW area, and when I was able to move over here to Weatherford where I lived, it was a lot closer to home. And so I'd say the most rewarding thing is, you know, being able to drive around and see things that I've personally been able to help build for everyone here, and my kids get to see that, and it's kind of a legacy that I'm really proud to continue. I am Weatherford. I'm Weatherford!
So that's the last video that we have at this time, but we have roughly four to five more employees that will be filming in a couple of weeks, so we'll have some more coming very soon, so.
Those are great.
Hope you all enjoyed, so.
Sure do. Thank you so much.
Round of applause for Chad, too.
Chad, thank you. Keep with me later on that autograph. Well done. Those are always fun. Item six on the agenda is consent agenda items. Council, we have six A, B, C, D, and E. We can entertain those as a group unless somebody would like to pull one or more off.
I would like to pull item six D and six E, please.
Mayor Pro Tem has asked for item six D and E to be pulled off. Any others, Council? Hearing none, we entertain a motion on item six A, B, and C. If that's your pleasure. Motion for approval by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion on item six A and B? A, B, and C before we call for a vote. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote this time. Six A, B, and C. Indicate yea or nay, please, on your screen. Passes four zero. Item six D is consider and/or and act upon awarding request for proposal RFP number 2020-007 to Sedalco Construction Services for a construction manager at Risk Services for an amount not to exceed $800,000 for a public safety facility. Six E is consider authorizing the city manager to sign an additional services agreement for the public safety facility with Brown Rentals Watford, BRW Architects. Mayor Pro Tem, did you have a comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say I'm very excited about the new public safety facility and just wanted to, we have two of our members, Kevin Cleveland and Jeff Robinson, who were on an initiative for this building and would like for Kevin Cleveland just to expound on his experience in that.
Fair enough. So Jeff and myself, first off, say thank you guys for letting us be part of that committee. Council's goal from the beginning was to make sure that we built a department that fit the needs of our citizens and served our citizens in a very respectful, honorable, you know, for the future and really put our minds into understanding what our police department needed to go for and what our community needs were. And so in the process, we had a couple of meetings with both architect as well as the, sorry, the wonderful little dog we got to treat this evening that just come in the back door.
Oh, yeah.
But anyway, see, we had several meetings with the CMR as well as the engineer, Chief Lance, and James Hotop was part of that group as well. And to speak to the team, the team that was assembled on a staff level is an amazing group. You know, council sometimes thinks that, you know, from a citizen's perspective, it looks like we really need to have our thumb on staff and watching them, but this staff that we have is in touch with our citizens like no other staff I've worked for. They know what the needs of the citizens are, and they respect and understand our role, and they really are open to hearing our suggestions of the citizens. So that initial goal set out between all of us was already a great working team, and I got to commend Chief Lance, his knowledge of what a police department needs to succeed, and I'm not talking about it just succeed, I'm talking about overachieve in a manner that serves and is respectful of the community and know what that future growth looks like and know how to obtain those quality people that we need as a group to serve our community. We don't want those that are settling for second best because they can't get on where they want. We want that top-notch department that brings in the people that respect and love our citizens. And I think this group has put that together, and we've had great conversations with both Sedalco and BRW, and I got to tell you, we've picked the right team with those guys, the CMR and the architect that we are going with, the level of commitment and professionalism with those guys. I'm very happy to have them on board. We've had all the hard discussions about what we needed and what it was going to take to get there, and I can say personally that I am confident in not only BRW but Sedalco as well as the team that we put together at staff level, that we're going to have a top-notch facility that serves us for a long time to come, and it's going to be a wonderful situation, so.
Thank you for, appreciate your willingness to serve on the committee and Mr. Robinson's willingness to do so. Mr. Tiscus, any comments?
No, just to thank you for your work and the good report.
Great. If there's another conversation on six D or six E, entertain a motion at this time. Motion on four by Mayor Pro Tem for approval, is this for both items?
Yes, sir.
That for six D and six E, second by Kevin Cleveland. Does that concur, sir? Six D and six E. Any discussion on items before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for both this time. Six D and six E. Any k, yea, or nay at this time? Passes four zero. Congratulations. I think to the citizens of Weatherford and any of those people that are watching right now, if you wonder where this council stands with public safety, I think you just got your answer. Item seven on the agenda, regular agenda item seven A is discuss and consider the award of bid number 2020-010 and authorize a city manager to execute a contract in the amount of $408,027.16 with Raytech Services LLC for the construction of a stormwater drainage system along Barnett Drive. Welcome, Mr. Hughes.
Mr. Mayor, Members of Council, Terry Hughes, Director of Capitol Transportation. In spring of 2019, we started survey work and design work for this project. Half and associates, our design team, worked with staff to formulate a system that would effectively collect stormwater along Barnett Drive and discharge it directly and safely into a major outfall and wetland area. Final plans for this project were presented to us early in 2020. The design required the purchase of two easements across private property. We were able to secure those easements late in May. Concurrent with acquisition of the easements, the project was advertised for bid through May, and bids were publicly opened on May 26, 2020. The project was bid as a base bid with three alternatives. If I can take just a moment, the alternatives actually had to do with the type pipe that was being used. One type was our standard reinforced concrete pipe. One type was polypropylene. The other type was a luminized metal pipe, just so happened the soils in this area are conducive for us to be able to use that type pipe if we desired to do so. Weatherford received eight bids ranging from a high bid of $924,838.56 for our base bid plus alternative one, which is concrete pipe, and a low bid of $400,332.99 for our base bid and alternate three, which is the illuminated pipe. Unfortunately, the low bidder was disqualified for not meeting bid security requirements. In other words, the bid bonds were incorrect. Therefore, staff recommends award of the next lowest bid offered by Raytech Services LLC in the amount of $408,027.16 for base bid and alternate three, and authorize city manager to execute a contract with Raytech Services for the same amount. Funds are available in our stormwater utility, and as soon as the contract is executed, we will be able to give you a timeline of construction.
Great. Thank you for the presentation, thorough and excellent. Any questions for Mr. Hughes, Council? Staff does recommend approval of this item as presented. Motion on four for approval is presented by Mr. Cleveland, second by Mayor Pro Tem. Any discussion on the item before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on seven A at this time. Any k, yea, or nay, please? Passes four zero. Seven B on the agenda is discuss and consider the following appointments. City council representatives on the Weatherford Economic Development Board and Municipal Utility Board, city council liaisons to city boards, commissions, and committees, city council representatives on the Audit Committee and the Risk Management Committee, and the Mayor Pro Tem. Council, any discussions on this? The mayor does have a recommendation, if you're open to that? Okay. My recommendation with the agreement of the Mayor Pro Tem is to shift the Transportation Advisory Board to Matt Tiscus from your current slate. Mr. Tiscus, we're also asking you to accept responsibility for Parks and Recreation Special Events Board and continue your service on the Utility Services Review Board. Council, any discussion on this? I believe this does require action, if that's your pleasure. Motion for approval by Mayor Pro Tem, second by Matt Tiscus. Any discussion on seven B before we call for a vote?
Look forward to it.
We know you do. Call for a vote this time. Any k, yea, or nay, please? Committee appointments pass four zero.
I do have to say I'm a little disappointed that I didn't get Heidi's Audit Committee, but maybe next year.
Hey, thanks for your willingness to step up and serve, and we really appreciate it, jumping right in. Item eight on the agenda, staff reports, eight A is street rehabilitation projects in the northeast quadrant of downtown Weatherford. Welcome, sir.
Mayor, Council, Manny Plaschus, Director of Transportation and Public Works, here to give you an update on the northeast downtown street rehab plan. So before I start, I kind of want to show you, well, here's a, I kind of want to show you what we're kind of going to be building similar to the northeast quadrant. This is the southeast quadrant, which is Church and Elm. This is the final product, and just kind of give you an overview of what we did when we started this project. Of course, the roads were in poor condition. Utilities, with the help of Mr. Rick Schaefer, Water Utilities, Joe Farley, Electric, you know, Franchise Utilities, AT&amp;T, Texas Gas, we all kind of jumped into this project and rehabbed all the utilities, put all utilities underground. And, you know, the main thing is, if you look at the whole side, is, you know, the whole purpose was to, one thing is make it aesthetically pleasing, pedestrian-friendly, and safety, ADA compliant, add sidewalks, and increase parking for about 30% with the angle parking in the roads. Those are just a few things that kind of helped out. Of course, lighting, more lighting at nighttime, those are kind of improvements that we did there. Here's kind of like a before, and if you just notice the difference, especially with the aerial utility lines, before, there's after.
How about that?
That's amazing.
Yep. There's before, there's after. You can see the stamped concrete. We added concrete on the intersections. You know, we did everything we did to make it more aesthetically and, of course, quality as well. We want to make sure that, you know, we're surface water drains across the road. It's over the concrete and not just the asphalt. So this is kind of like overview of Church Street. As you can see, you know, the parking parallel and angle parking, the stamped concrete, the bulbouts. And one thing about the bulbouts, if you notice, it's not only just for the pedestrians, but it's also kind of helps out with traffic calming. You know, you want to kind of keep those motorists slow down when they're driving through there, kind of keep them under lane. So that's one important thing that we try to push those bulbouts for. So anyways, our plan is to move to the northeast quadrant of the square of downtown, and you see what's highlighted in red, Austin Avenue, Trinity Street, and Elm Street. Basically, you know, we, this is, the roads are, you know, pretty poor shape. We need to rehab them. There's a lot of utilities that need to be rehabbed, so that's one of the main purposes we're moving on that side. And of course, we're also working with the county where I think they're going to re, I guess, move their chiller to that side of the quadrant. So this is the concept plan, and if you notice, it's very similar to Church and Elm. We have bulbouts. We have a one-way on Trinity Avenue going westbound towards the square, and then Austin Avenue, one-way going northbound towards Spring Street. Elm Street will be a two-way, continuous two-way, both north and south, and if, the main purpose of the one-way, of course, is to, you know, accommodate the parking, angle parking and parallel parking, but also, it's also for traffic flow. If you noticed, if someone comes in, we noticed that a lot of traffic is always, you know, going towards downtown, and so on Trinity Avenue, if you're going, we noticed that most of traffic goes westbound, so we want to keep it clockwise. If you're looking, if someone's searching for a parking spot, you know, we don't want them kind of, you know, just parking somewhere or being stuck somewhere, so we want to make sure they continue westbound on Trinity, continue northbound on Austin, so it's kind of like a clockwise, spring and back to Elm, similar to what the, on the square, where the square parking is clockwise as well. We want to make sure that we got, we have circulation for motorists to, so that way when they're driving around, it's, the one-way helps out. The bulbouts, ADA, we're going back with stamped concrete, parallel parking as much as we can, working to rehab as most of the sidewalk that's in place. We are working with utilities, with, of course, water utility, Mr. Rick Schaefer, Joe Farley, with the electric. We're going to be working with our franchise utilities, which is AT&amp;T, Texas Gas, cable TV. Our whole goal is to make, put all those underground, so that way the visual clutter is not seen. And I want to show you this picture here. This is Austin Avenue. You can see all the power lines. You can see the sidewalks where there's some sidewalk missing on, I guess it'll be on your left side. The sidewalk on the, on the west side is pretty much out of compliance, broken up. There are some trip hazards. We want to rehab all that. We're going to put those dumpsters that you see there, we're going to work with those businesses and try to see if we can help them, move them offside or away from the road, so that way they're not in the actual pavement but away from the roadway. Here's, this is just a point of view, kind of look. I drew this, so, you know, it's not the best, but kind of give you a vision of the angle parking, the bulbouts, the crosswalks, and basically the improvement of the concrete. So our timeline is pretty much, you know, predicated on a lot of things. Main thing is utilities. If you notice, we want to start, you know, as soon as possible, so we want to start in next month, work through our survey, design, and hopefully our final plans. We want to coordinate meetings, have coordination meetings with our utilities, water department, service department, electric, work with our franchise, AT&amp;T, kind of get them involved as well, kind of coordinate with our utilities, and the whole goal there is, we can see the blue all the way to July, have all the utility relocated underground or rehab, and then in August, either late July, late August, start on the actual street improvements. And we kind of want to, the reason July is, that's when we don't want to be in there where, when the Peach Festival is at that timeline, we kind of want to wait until the Peach Festival, Peach Festival is over and kind of start, you know, working on the street project. So our goal is, you know, it's all predicated on utilities, working with all franchise utilities, but our goal is to have this project completed by December of 2021.
Can you go back to the timeline briefly?
Do what now?
Back to the timeline just for a moment?
Sure.
It may still be up there. I have it on the screen here.
Yeah.
You put it on the screen for, I'm sorry.
The timeline? Or the concept?
No, the timeline that you just had on the screen.
Do you see it out there?
No, let me get to it. Hold on just a moment. We possibly asked for an update in December or January, just to make sure the project's on pace.
Sure.
And it's going to be a magnificent difference for that quadrant of downtown. It's been huge. If you drive by the Church Elm area in the evenings, it is in at lunch. The other day, met there for lunch. Those parts, spots are awful. Every angle and parking spot and on the road are full, and it's driving business to downtown. We're getting a return on that investment, and we will do the same thing in this quadrant, too. So we're real appreciative of y'all's vision and ability to do this.
One of the things we're going to do, too, is, so this is the next project downtown, so after we get through the planning and design process for this, we'll go ahead and start the planning and design process for that next phase, so there'll be additionals after this as we work our way systematically through downtown, so we don't have a lag in the design process or anything. We can just move from one to the next.
One follow-up question. What's your, your timing for communication and your plan for communication to local business owners, so they'll know when and how and?
Well, as soon as, if, this is a staff report to council, if the council's okay, as soon as tomorrow, we're, I'm working with Deborah Wakelin, our downtown coordinator, working with her and start maybe visiting with the businesses personally and kind of showing them the plan and kind of getting them aware of what's going to happen, because as you know, when construction starts, that's when the complaints start coming in.
Sure.
You know, everything's being turned apart, but we're going to give them a heads-up, our timeline, and I promise that, you know, we'll fix everything the way, if we tear up anything on their side, we'll fix it back the way it was and continue on.
Sure. I think that they'll understand and appreciate the vision for the finished product. Mr. Cleveland, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. I just was going to say, I know we're not supposed to pick favorites, but the annual review that we get, the magazine that we get that shows each department's before and after what they've done for the year, I got to say, y'all's is one of my favorites to look at, and I actually keep each year's report with me, and it's mainly because of the work that you guys do with our streets, because our street department gets a beating because, I mean, honestly, if you're not paving what's in front of my house, do I know what you're doing? The answer is no. I mean, if my street's bad, it doesn't matter what everybody else's is. But to look back at y'all's, at that magazine, that report at the end of the year and look at the number of miles of streets that we rehab every year, and to see not just the ones that we seal coat and we patch and we repair and maintain, but the ones that we completely rehab every year, and neighborhoods are changing because of this project. I mean, it's changing the overall appearance, and you can drive down these streets and you can see individuals that own homes seeing what the city's doing with their streets, putting time into their yards, repainting, a sense of pride in people being out and about with their neighbors. So I'm very appreciative of what you guys do, and y'all deserve some praise for.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's also commendable on how well our staff and our departments work together, because having those utilities underground is amazing. It's just, it's beautiful, and it's a real credit to all of our staff and how well you and all the utility departments work together, and we're so thankful to have you here to really make our downtown beautiful.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for the wisdom, too, of thinking about the Peach Festival and how important that event is. Tearing up during that time would not be ideal, so grateful for your thought on that and the work that's been done in the southeast quadrant just looks great. So excited that we're continuing to invest in downtown, excited what the future has for us, so thanks.
Thank you.
That sounds like a unanimous thank you.
Yep.
Thank you so much for that great presentation. Any other, any other comments on eight A before we move forward, Council? Mr. Hotop, do you have any comments?
I was just going to reinforce what Council, Cleveland had mentioned, but, you know, the redevelopment of Sloan and Rusk and Bodark, and there's a list of those you can go through and look at before and after and just the amount of redevelopment in the neighborhoods and people that are starting to take pride in redo houses or new houses that are built or remodeling houses, and so it's really an investment in our own city to redevelop, and so it's really, it's really a very positive thing to happen, so.
All righty. Item nine on the agenda. Item nine on the agenda is future agenda items. Mr. Hotop, anything from you, sir?
There's none.
Counsel? Hearing none, we'll move to item 10 on the agenda, which is citizen comments on non-agenda items. I do have two speakers today. First, going to call Denise Farrell. Denise, you still with us?
Yeah.
Thanks for your patience with us.
No problem.
Once you get settled up there, if we can have your name and address, and we'll give you three minutes up there.
All righty.
Thank you.
My name is Denise Farrell. I am a resident of Weatherford. Love Weatherford. My husband and I are actually business owners. We own a couple of businesses in Weatherford, one of them being Northside Remedy. We own that building, so you know our tenant, Montana. I wanted to kind of let you know, I mainly do work in commercial real estate, so I bring a lot of clients to downtown Weatherford and other cities. With that said, I want to let you know that also I serve on the Downtown Vision Community, which is formed by central business district owners consisting of representatives of the Development and Neighborhood Services. I want to thank Caleb for that. Our goal is to support and grow the vitality, vitality of downtown Weatherford. With my tenant, which we all know, she's a phenomenal business owner, there's a couple of things that I'm here to kind of talk about. Northside Remedy is needing some signage and some infrastructure. You know, we have been working with Development and Neighborhood Services on a sign request. A decline of this request might possibly cause Northside Remedy to go out of business. So it's pretty important that we get some signage. Infrastructure is very simple. Property owners, merchants need customers. We have come a long way to attract customers by adding lighting, seating, new businesses, events, a nice mix wherever, the increasing property value significantly. And I want to thank you for that. However, I don't understand some of the simple things, like how does one property owner, like the old theater, hold an entire quadrant hostage? I'm currently showing properties, prospects in downtown Weatherford. And I have brought several. One of them is a very nice winery prospect. Their opinions were, not mine, this is theirs, they felt that downtown was a little unkept, lacked amenities, and asked me where she could find the restrooms. So, and I have another major retail prospect that was a little put off by some of the trash blowing, lack of landscaping, and weeds in the cracks. So it was just a little outdated. With that said, I do appreciate what you do and I just don't want to be Negative Nellie here. So I do appreciate what you're doing, but this is something I feel like that I needed to bring forward to all of you, okay? Also, with that said, our next meeting for the Downtown Vision Committee will be held on Friday noon at June the 26th. We would love to have any of you attend that, whoever could legally attend and be involved in our group. We can't do anything without the blessing, without the blessing and support of you guys and we want that. Property owners want to work with you. Storage and vacancy, there are small problems when you see successful businesses closing. So I'm trying to bring a winery to downtown right now and overcoming the closure of Sweet Springs, winery is a tough to overcome, but the closure of Northside Remedy would be devastating to that district. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for being here and we, this is your forum and to share those thoughts and we're thankful that you were patient enough and thoughtful enough to come forward and share them. Thank you. Russ Garrison, Mr. Garrison, thanks for your patience this evening. If you can do the same thing, sir, when you get settled, if we give your name and address and we'll give you three minutes.
All righty. Russ Garrison, I'm President and CEO, Sedalco Construction. We're based out of Fort Worth, Texas. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank mayor, council, for the confidence you have in awarding us this project. I'm with a couple of other people with our firm, Clark Sykes, who will be our Business Development Director, and John Fisher, who will be the project manager on the new police station. We've already rolled up our sleeves and gone to work with Chief Arnold and we're excited about it. Thank you, Councilman Cleveland, for the words you had about our firm. We know that our reputation, we have to earn it every day. And we're looking forward to an opportunity to roll up our sleeves and work with you. We do a lot of law enforcement work all across the state of Texas. They're great people to support with what we do in building buildings for them. And we're looking forward to working with Chief Arnold and the council and being part of your community again in building this new facility. So I just want to take the opportunity to say thank you. I know I'm the last agenda item, everybody wants to get out of here, but I didn't want to get out of there with that, saying that. So thank you very much. We appreciate the confidence and we look forward to it as well, so.
And thank you for making the trip and for sharing your thoughts. Thank you, Mr. Garrison. All righty. Don't have any more speaker cards. Anybody from the audience who'd like to come up under citizens' comments on non-agenda items, please do so at this time. Seeing none, we'll go to item 11 on the agenda, which is adjournment. Counsel? Kevin Cleveland for a motion for adjournment, second by Mayor Pro Tim Wilder. Any discussion before we call for a vote? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote this time for adjournment. Please indicate yea or nay. And we are adjourned four to zero at 7:05 PM.